Has everybody signed the sheet that wants to speak tonight? Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we start the meetings with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. God of justice and mercy, we know that you're with us at all times and in all places, if only we turn to you in faith. And so we turn to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service, as well as those members of our community who are with us tonight to join us in our deliberations and decision-making. We ask that you would give all of us patience and the commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always be mindful that we are public servants. Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have a vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom and the determination to do what is best, even if it's not easy. Guide us in all we do to work for the common good. Tonight, we also ask your blessings on our courageous first responders, as well as those who seek their help. We ask blessings on all those who support and contribute to the work of this commission, knowing that without their diligent efforts, our work here would not be possible. Loving Creator, we pray all these things in the name of Jesus and all that is holy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Hi, guys.
Here.
Dan Boghossian. Roger Burke.
Here.
Peter Hogendike.
Here.
John Surbeck. Kevin Kirkwood.
Here.
Dan Sands. Dwayne Owens.
Here.
Okay, I'm...I'd like everybody to turn off their cellphones or to mute them, so we don't have any disturbances during our meeting, if you would. Do we have a staff report on the Board of County Commissioners' actions?
Yes, we had a few cases that went forward to the board after our last, yeah, after our last meeting. The first one was the Core Substation Project. That was something that was approved by the board. That was over on County Road 13. It was basically a replacement for that existing substation that is there north of Elizabeth. Next project was Jimenez Torres. That was one existing 35-acre lot. They basically cut that in half, so it had two 17- or 18-acre lots. And that was a rezone for that property as well. That was approved. The Tenderfoot 2 Pipeline, that was a 7.8-mile pipeline that went from kind of one corner of the county over to another one, along about County Road 174, if I remember correctly. That was also approved. And then the Lizcot Homes, there was a rezone that was proposed, and they continued that to August to give the applicant time to kind of explore maybe some different options that might be available to them. So that might be something that comes across your desk again, perhaps. You know, we'll see how that evolves, but they're looking into a variety of different options.
Thank you. Okay, but do we have anything on consent agenda? No? Okay, at this point in time, we can have citizen comments. If you've got anything you would like to talk about that's not on the agenda for tonight, something that you would like to bring to our attention, this is a time that you would do it, if you would like to. Okay, seeing none. We have the meetings minutes for the last meeting to approve. Are there any, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment. On the meeting before, I had, in my motion, I had requested that the apron be added to the existing driveway, not the additional one. And it got reported in the minutes as on the additional driveway. So that should read "the existing driveway," because their proposal already included. I will move approval as modified.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved for approval on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So our public hearing process, it requires this body to conduct a quasi-judicial hearing, which means the body must find facts and base its decision upon the application of the adopted regulation standards, criteria, and the competent substantial and material evidence received during this hearing. All testimony must be competent, on topic, and not repetitious. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing process. Our first item on here is to be continued. I'd like to hear a motion to go ahead and continue that. Which one?
Could we have the motion?
Cricket World Cricket Fields S U R case SU 22-0005.
Yes, sir.
Could we have that be moved to a specific date?
Yes, it needs to be...
I motion to continue the case till future...
July 19th.
July 19th? Yes, sir. July 19th for SU 22-005, 0005.
Okay, it's moved in seconded that we continue that to a date certain of July 19th, 2022. All in favor? Aye. Now, we have the staff presentation on the second item, which is the 1041 Regulations Update and Revisions.
Thank you. My name is Greg Thompson. I'm the CDS Director for Elbert County. I'll be presenting this information to you this evening. Elbert County currently has 1041 regulations, and this is an update designed to change them in a variety of ways, including removing some sections and adding other sections. We'll kind of go through that. I want to talk just a little bit about, you know, kind of where we've been with 1041 regulations. The state enacted 1041 regulations in 1974. Elbert County adopted their first regulations in 1995, and then updated them from 1995 to 2005, four different times. The idea or the plan with these regulations are to streamline the regulations and propose for new areas and activities of state interest, is what the term of art is. A little bit of background on what 1041 regulations are. They are state-enabled power, if you will, for local government and local review of large-scale projects that are of statewide interest. It allows local governments to identify, designate, and regulate certain areas and activities of state interest through a local permitting process. It gives local governments a greater seat at the table with development projects occurring within their jurisdiction. So Elbert County has greater say, if you will, in what is proposed. Local government has to identify and designate the areas or activities of state interest that are important to that community. So by going through this, we're identifying what is important to Elbert County. The 1041 intent and outcomes, these are regulatory. So it's not an advisory, although Planning Commission does give an advisory recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The county in and of itself, these are a regulation, if you will. It can influence the site selection and design, so where some of these facilities would locate. The county would also have the ability to deny or revoke a permit, enforce rules and regulations, offer penalties if they're not being done in compliance with the regulations that the county has. It can also get financial securities based on potential impact to roads or other infrastructure. Can also do inspections, go on private property to take a look at those facilities to make sure that they are compliant. Also, take a look at kind of a cost-benefit analysis, if you will, between environmental and socioeconomic potential impacts. So this 1041 regulation drafting process has gone through a variety of steps. There's been kind of an identification of concerns that the Board of County Commissioners and Planning Commission had that was, you know, more like a year and a half or so ago is when that type of conversation was being held. A variety of different codes and rules and regs have been researched. We hired a consultant, Logan Simpson, to help us put together those rules and regulations. They couldn't be here tonight, but they should be at the Board of County Commissioners' meeting in a week. There was a public open house that was held, comment period after we put it up on the county website and sent it out to potential interested folks. There are study sessions with the board and the Planning Commission, and the red arrow points to where we're at now. Planning Commission Public Hearing and Recommendation, and then the board would have their hearing on July 13th. The size of the document has been reduced, so it started out at one point in time as about 125 pages through consolidation and kind of removing duplicative language. We removed that down, or got that down to 47 pages. Six comment letters were received. Three were included in your packet. There are another three that were at your table as you sat down today. That was also emailed to you earlier today. So if you haven't had an opportunity to look at those last ones, you may want to. So the different types of activities of state interest, and these are things that are talked about in the state statutes, you know, that's where they're located. These different categories, including domestic water sewer treatment systems, water conservation, public utilities, new communities, highways and interchanges, mass transit, airports, solid waste disposal, geothermal resources, and nuclear detonation. So those things in and around highway interchanges, or in and around where those public utilities might be, those are, those are the types of uses that could be looked at and reviewed as part of those 1041 regulations. So right now, in the Elbert County Rules and Regs, we have two different categories of those, I didn't count the number, give or take 10, public utilities and new communities. There are five that are proposed: public utilities, water and sewer projects, highways and interchanges in areas around that, mass transit in areas around that, solid waste disposal. Talk a little bit about some of those. The mass transit and areas around that, recognize, we don't have mass transit right now, but there has been conversation about perhaps having rail lines that go from, you know, the north side of the Front Range to the south side. They might very well go through Elbert County, should that ever happen. So we'd want the opportunity to be able to react to that in maybe a little bit different way than just our zoning code, if we have those rules and regulations in there. So that was why that in particular was included. There are five areas that are proposed to not be regulated, including airports, new communities, geothermal resources, nuclear detonation, and water conservation. The new communities was talked about in terms of, well, we have that now, why do we want to remove that? The thinking was that with our existing rules and regulations around subdivisions, rezoning, and then PUDs, those larger projects that might be subject to a potential new community, really in large measure, is already being addressed by our existing regulations. So that was the kind of expectation and thought, conversation around that. So we tried to look at scope and scale. If we're going to have the potential for wind systems in the county, what type of process should they go through? What should be allowed, what shouldn't be allowed? So this kind of talks about that a little bit. If it's generating less than 50 kilowatts, if there's only one turbine with a height of, you know, no more than 80 feet, that'd be basically a building permit process that they would have to go through. If it was a small wind energy system that's designed to kind of generate more electricity, then perhaps might be used on just one site, two or three turbines, same height, that would have to go through a special use review. Anything more than that would have to go through the 1041 regulations, in either a minor or major category. And there are a couple of different differences between those. They have, that minor and major have the same process, but they have different criteria. So if it's a major process, there are different things that you look at. In addition to those minor criteria, you also then have some additional major criteria, if you will. Major water and sewer treatment systems, there's been some conversation about this and adding this in. If it's a smaller system that might serve, you know, a smaller type of development, maybe no more than 100 lots or 100 dwelling units, that would be done via a preliminary and final plat. So our existing regulations would basically cover that. If it's a little bit larger subdivision, 100 to 249 dwelling units, that would be a minor 1041 application. And if it was the largest subdivisions that we might see that have that public water and public sewer system, that would be more than 250 units that would have to go through the 1041 regulation. And part of that is because you want them to be able to perhaps serve beyond just their own individual subdivision and area. We have several instances where there is an adjacent neighborhood that's being proposed to develop and wants to use that system. So if there could be some kind of planning in terms of what might be available for that individual system in relation to a subdivision, it might be something that is helpful to kind of anticipate that potential growth. Talking about the size of solar and what might be appropriate for that, building permit would be less than 15 kilowatts. A small commercial, you know, generating facility, 15 kilowatts to 5 megawatts. Kind of the size of that would be anticipated to be 1 to 100 acres, would be a special use review. So that's something in the current regulations now. A medium-sized commercial facility that would be 100 to 200 acres would be a minor 1041. And then the largest utility scale would be more than 30 megawatts, more than 200 acres. That would be that major category again. So how does that process work? If somebody is interested in doing a 1041 application, they meet with staff and go through what that proposal is and where it would fall. Is that a special use review? Is that a building permit? Is it a major or minor 1041? So make that determination. We have a pre-application meeting where we sit down with other departments, perhaps the Fire Department, Public Works, that type of thing, and give them good feedback on how best they can make their application. Depending on the route that they need to go, shoot them in the right direction, let them know what's required for those applications. Once a formal application comes in, we route that around like every other application to get, you know, the Fire Department to review that formal application, anybody else that might be affected by that. Applicant responds to comments, resubmits, try to get everything cleaned up by the time it comes to you, so there's not violations of the code, or it's not to this or to that, it's something that complies with the code, and you can take a look at the merit of the application. Planning Commission would then offer a recommendation to the board, so it would follow very similarly to what a normal land use application would be. We do have a community meeting that would also be required prior to the application, failed to mention that, sorry. Public would certainly be involved in the same ways that they are now, that somebody would have to put signs up on the property, they have to send, you know, letters to surrounding property owners, notice in the newspaper as well. So folks that might want to be involved could certainly be aware of what's going on with that. So some of the criteria for review and approval of a 1041 application, this is for all of them, whether they're minor or major. They take a look at, you know, property rights. They protect water quality, you know, avoid basically natural hazards, you know, whatever they're putting in, you don't necessarily want that to fall apart or, you know, cause problems in the future. How does that comply with the county's master plan or their comprehensive plan? Make sure, as much as possible, it won't have a negative impact on local government, so schools, water districts, et cetera. If it's taken down at some point in the future, are there plans made for that? What do you anticipate to have happen? And how long will that existing use or that proposed use be there? Because that can be a short time, that can be a long time, and what happens after? So take a look at those things. Some of the other criteria, that it won't degrade the environment, it won't negatively impact high-priority habitat, not cause a nuisance, would not significantly degrade important areas of archaeological or historic areas. It's necessary to meet a community development and population demand in those areas. It would not result in unreasonable risk as well of hazardous materials. I think with this type of criteria, it's probably similar as we might give recommendations to the Planning Commission or the board regarding the comprehensive plan. There's some things that might, you know, be a positive, there are some things that might be a negative, and, you know, the Planning Commission and the board really is charged with, you know, how do you value that in relation to, how negative is that? How positive is that? So that's some of the challenges, I think, that the Planning Commission might face with that. If there's a major review permit, there's some additional requirements, I mentioned that earlier. So this isn't the minor applications. They'd be subject to those last 12 we looked at. The major would be subject to those last 12 plus these seven, including that it would not provide a financial burden on the county or residents of the county. It's feasible. It can be done. It's technically and financially capable of being done. The applicant has the expertise to do the work and operate that facility, would not significantly degrade any sector of the economy. It wouldn't degrade the quality or quantity of recreational experiences that are available in the county. The benefits to the county would outweigh the losses of any resources within the county. So again, kind of weighing, you know, how much is too much or how much would fit. The project is the most suitable solution as well for the existing technology cost impact, et cetera. So the five, again, that the county is looking at is public utilities, water and sewer projects, highways and interchanges in areas that are around those highways and interchanges, mass transit, again, around where they might have stops and/or lines that would come through, and then solid waste disposal. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward the revised and updated 1041 regulations to the board as drafted with a recommendation of approval. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Be appropriate to have a public hearing for this. I would also like to point out that Mike Moore had helped with this very extensively. This is a project he's worked long and hard on. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, at this point, we can open it up to the public testimony. We don't have a particular applicant, so we can skip that part of it. And if anybody would like to speak about this, we have a list, and we'll call it in order. Okay, Robert?
Yes, sir.
You'll state your name, address, and then what you have to say. And you'll have...
Robert Polat.
Each person will have three minutes to talk.
Very good. Robert Polat, 34006, County Road 73. First of all, I applaud you for the work that you've done on the 1041. Obviously, our concern, or as an individual within the county, my main concern is associated with the wind and solar projects. And not understanding the difference between the 1041 and the existing zoning and zoning regulations, and understanding what teeth are available for neighbors of any of these projects within the given rules of the setback. So if I read some of the rules correctly, there is, associated with any of these projects, a quarter-mile setback. My question is, how was that standard set? Was it based upon the project itself? Was it based upon safety? Or was it based upon, you know, the potential impact for land values? That question is then also then associated with just the general math associated with that. Obviously, with a wind, or, excuse me, with a solar project, you know, the visual impact is probably less than 20 feet. And a quarter-mile setback makes all the sense in the world. But when you have a wind turbine project that, you know, based upon the 1041 regs for your criteria of major or minor impact, you're only talking about 80 feet. The last, all the wind turbines I've seen are exceeding, you know, 150, 200, and at the top of the radius of the wind turbine itself, 250 feet. So my question is, is that same math apply for something of a greater height? Is that then multiplied? And then how does, how does the impacted neighbors have any say in how that impacts them and the potential for loss of value of their property? I mean, you did mention in the zoning regulations or in the 1041 that there is, you know, the potential for changes in value or productivity of any lands. Does that also impact those neighbors who would be impacted by those wind and solar projects? That's about it. There's more I can talk about, but we'll save that for some of the other members of the group. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the second one was Carrie. You will state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Carrie Gibbels. I live at 19656 Wiedemeyer Road, and I've been a 35-year resident of Elbert County. As a Planning Commission, you have the important task of advising the Board of County Commissioners. And tonight, you're discussing the 1041 regulations, which govern large-scale projects. Elbert County is changing at a rapid pace, and I commend you for revising these regulations to protect and preserve our beautiful county from incoming projects that have the ability to destroy it. As you know, Xcel Energy is trying to put a segment of their 560-mile high-tension tran- As you know, Exel Energy is trying to put a segment of their 560-mile high-tension transmission lines, their power pathway, through the heart of Elbert County. The plan then is to, quote, "slather the eastern plains with wind and solar," to use the words of Public Utility Commissioner John Gavin. To people in Denver, even the people of Elizabeth, anything east of Kiowa is considered the middle of nowhere, the perfect place for such projects. But for those of us who live there, it's not the middle of nowhere, it's the middle of heaven. We need you to protect this land that we love from becoming the, quote, "field of dreams" for wind and solar. Those are the words of Alice Jackson, CEO of Exel's Colorado subsidiary. We need you to make sure that these regulations are strong enough to protect us from the following impacts these projects would bring: decreased property values, destroyed landscape, animal habitats, view sheds and vistas, increased fire danger, destruction of agricultural land, health risks inherent in such projects, television cell and internet disruption, sub-frequency noise, night lighting, flicker effect, ice throws. Additionally, when considering such projects, do these regulations do enough to protect adjacent landowners? Many of these projects would greatly impact residents for several miles, not just next door. And finally, will these regulations stringently govern the decommissioning of these facilities, which seem to last a far shorter time than they're intended? Exel's Pueblo Plant is shutting down by 2031, even though it was intended to operate until 2040. We're counting on you to do your due diligence to protect the citizens of Elbert County and this beautiful place where we live. Please make sure that these zoning regulations will do just that. Thank you so much.
Our third speaker is Brad Ray.
I'm attending, I guess, just to kind of get a better understanding of what your role in, as a planning commission, might be in the approval process for this Exel Energy Power Pathway. My name is Brad Ray, I live at 17112 Highway 86, with my wife Nicole, who's here tonight as well. And again, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of you all's role in the approval of that process. As you're aware, Highway 86 is a proposed pathway, one of apparently about three remaining pathways for this power line. We have two parcels of land that front Highway 86 and would be very detrimentally impacted by the placement of power towers along that pathway route. Not that I'm altogether for it being anywhere in Elbert County, but certainly down that Highway 86 corridor area, you know, it is a main throw for, obviously, through Elbert County, it stands to have a significant impact on it, both its beauty, its visibility, property values, quality of life for all of us who have invested in properties along there. And from a personal standpoint, having attended the meetings that Exel has provided us, I've been very dissatisfied with any of the interactions that I've had with their personnel. They don't seem to have much interest whatsoever in what we actually feel, they're just going to seem to be, from my perspective, going through the motions and obtaining whatever public element they're required to obtain. However, I have requested several different times that I be contacted by a representative from their organization, never has happened. And so I would, I would certainly urge you to, you know, take into strong account that many of the criteria that I saw listed as criteria for approving such, such a project were certainly not met. I can't imagine they'd be met by this particular project passing along Highway 86 like that. Tremendous impacts. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Lynn Stoller.
Hi, my name is Lynn Stoller, and we live at 35979 Private Road 71. My husband and I moved out here a year and a half ago from Littleton, and like Carrie said, it is heaven to us, and not knowing just until recently that Exel Pathways was planned beyond going through our property, it was just a shock, you know, we moved out here to get away from all the craziness, and they have since changed it, but we have gotten to know our neighbors, we love our neighbors, we love the community, we love the area, we love Elbert County, and we just want to be a representation of the county, and we want to thank you for all that you do, we really appreciate it, and I just, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but here I am, but thank you so much.
I'm sorry, it looks like we skipped Jason.
Good evening, my name is Jason Stuklich, I live at 18952 Wiedemeyer, and I've been also part of the Elbert County Environmental Coalition. We've been actively trying to get more information about the Exel Pathways project and the impacts on our community, and we're very concerned about that, you know, we didn't move out, I've been here a resident about 11 years, and, you know, we didn't move out here to see a bunch of wind turbines and everything else, and, you know, just trying to work with the state, we've reached out to the state, we've reached out to others, and just like getting environmental impact studies, and there's nothing out there that even says that this is a safe project, you know, and there is a lot of counties throughout the United States that are actively trying to stop this type of stuff, which we have put on our website, we encourage you to go to it, you can find some of that information, you can look up yourself. But I see the words like streamline and stuff like that, and that, those words kind of scare me a little bit, because it, it means we're just like, things can get rubber-stamped too easy, and things can just happen so quickly because of all this growth that comes in. I really encourage to, that our processes are very systematic and not maybe so streamlined so we can get to those whole impact on all this stuff. I'm in the military, and I've traveled all over the world. I was just in France last September, and there's windmills all over in their countryside, and half of them aren't even operating, you know, and you're driving through this beautiful country. I've been recently stationed in, on the East Coast, and some of these big cities will have one or two wind turbines right there in the middle of their city, not operating at all. So, it's kind of that impact of all this stuff comes in, and then it just falls apart very quickly, and then nothing happens. I know we have all these new communities coming in, you know, there's ways we could do solar farms there, in some of these new subdivisions to where, you know, each house puts on two solar panels at a very minimal charge, and there you have a solar farm that's already there in the existing community instead of taking up more space out there, and let kind of the agricultural community change as it's going. Probably many of you have seen as well, where you see livestock tanks, you see the old windmills that used to be there, and now you're starting to see small little solar sites to where they've been able to make it be more efficient for them. But I'm really concerned, and I think we should be very cautious, on the impacts of the power pathways, not the initial project, which I am scared about, but the follow-on projects, and these massive solar farms and wind towers and the impact it's going to have. So, I just ask that on all of our regulations, that, you know, that the processes are in place and they're really debatable, because, you know, we are in a very changing world in technology, and I haven't invested in solar yet, because I know there's, there's better, more efficient, and smaller ways to do it in the future, and there are smaller wind turbines that are actually more efficient, way smaller than what they're seeing out there today in some of these European countries, and I think we just got to put the brakes on this, the, the way Exel and the Puck have kind of operated on this Powers Pathways project, it's not been in the best intentions, and, you know, we've been holding meetings almost once a month, and everyone, pretty much, most of the people that come in-
Mr. Chair, that's three minutes.
All right, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Name's Eric Giblitz, 19656 Wiedemeyer Road, how you doing, Delane? It's been a while. I'm here to talk about that Exel Power Pathways and the unintended consequences that are being considered when you go through a permit. They want to put a high-tension power line through Elbert County. Okay, well, what happens when those cables need to be replaced? Are they just going to bury them? I don't see anything in your calibrating permit levels here about the hazardous waste that may incur from a lot of these projects that they want to put out there. And my biggest fear is, once they get their hooks into Elbert County, if a turbine goes bad, they're just going to bury those blades right underneath it. If a solar power goes bad, those panels, they're highly toxic, highly hazardous waste. They're built in China, for God's sakes, and they don't care what they contain as long as it meets the requirements that they were built for. Where are they going to be buried? Are they going to be buried there on site, or are they going to be shipped out somewhere? And once they start doing that, is that going to open the door for other areas, other states to ship in their solar panels and windmill blades and/or generators and have it buried here in Elbert County? And then on top of that, what's going to happen with the water? You know, we saw some things up here about, you know, you guys are going to be looking at the water. Well, those things will reach the water tables and which then will be impacting quite a few people in this whole county. With this county growing so fast, and I don't even know where they're getting the water, I mean, they're planning on 2,000 homes up on 13, with that new road they just built in there, where are they getting the water? And if the water system out here, if our aquifers get polluted by solar windmills and/or high-tension cables that have to be replaced, you know, we're all in a, we're all in a lot of trouble, and that's going to be your legacy, if that's not thoroughly thought out. Your legacy will be is that, you know, Elbert County Planning Commission actually destroyed the county. Instead of having those pine trees up on the low go, we're going to have windmills and solar panels instead of what we have up there right now. Is that the legacy that we want? I don't think so. So we need to very carefully consider what we're doing here and protect this county for what we all moved out here for. Now, I raise a few cows, you know, and thank God for the rain today, but, that was helpful, but, you know, I didn't move out here 35, 40 years ago to look at windmills. I go through Lyman quite a bit when I go out, out towards Lyman to visit a friend of mine, and I'm telling you, it's, I see those windmills not turning more than turning. It's just, it's amazing to me, and I laugh every single time. You go down Quincy, there's a huge solar farms out there, and is that what you want to look at? Even if it's not on your property, is that what you want? Is that what you want for the county? So, thank you very much.
Hi, Jill Adair, 19724 Wiedemeyer Road. Just wanted to say really quick that thank you guys for doing all this work for the regs, that that's a very positive sign, that I'm part of the Elbert County Environmental Alliance also, and just that we're trying to fight to keep the power lines out of the, especially around the pine trees and for fire, and also the value of our property, and that you guys have heard about a lot, down in the Bijou Valley where we have so much wildlife. The other thing is also the planning for, I'm just going to reiterate what they've said too, basically about the visual effect that the wind turbine farms have. For a short time, we had a farm in Kansas also for hay, and we saw the wind farms come in there and how it completely changed the environment, and from going from beautiful ranch country to feeling like you're living in the middle of skyscrapers that move, basically, and just want to say thank you guys for going through all this. You are our last line of defense against these huge projects that, you know, they have eminent domain, but at least with the right regulations, we can have some type of leverage, I guess, to be able to, to have some power against the state's rules, to be able to have some control in our own county, because my family's been here for over 45 years, and now we have, you know, the great-grandkids and all that, so it's, you know, a generational thing that my family's been invested in, and we're, you know, love this, the county and the country, and just to have this kind of environment is getting more rare, and to come and bring in something that is so man-made into these areas where it's teepee rings and, you know, arrowheads, and where very few white men have even stepped, and just to keep that, it's just getting more rare, and so just for your consideration of how to control that for people that don't have any control of what their neighbors are doing, and the visual effects and the property values and that, so, thank you.
Your next speaker would be John.
Thank you, John Mott, 18087 County Road 150. I'm here to talk about the wind turbines too that we've come to love so much. A couple of things, one is you said that the, a project should have a benefit, one of the criterias is a benefit to the county?
Excuse me, excuse me, you need to address your comments to the planning commission.
Okay, that, I apologize. And one of the criteria was economic benefit to the county, and as far as I know, the wind turbines and the transmission line are not providing any economic incentive or benefit to this county, it's a pass-through. As been stated before, those of us that live out in the east or in the wasteland of the United States kind of love it, sort of, and I really do, I'm irritated with people telling me what I should or should not like. The thing about the wind turbines is, they've done a lot of studies, and the more studies they do, the less economic viability they find in, and that actually the cost of putting them together of the natural resources, including a lot of heavy metals and rare earth metals that maybe would be better suited somewhere else. A lot of this has to do with more of an economic incentive as investments, more than a green energy renewable resource. The last I've, the last figure I've heard is maybe 25% efficiency for wind turbines, which means you're still going to have to have online another source of energy to, for those times when the wind turbines aren't running. Twice I've been out to, I just went through Burlington, and there's a bunch of wind turbines out there, at least two of them are missing blades, I don't know, they've fallen on the ground, so I don't know what happens when that happens, what is, who manages that cost, who manages the cost of, after the useful life, and like some other people have said, I think the usefulness of the wind turbines has actually come and gone. I do believe, and I do believe very strongly, that if they would just allow people to kind of invent things instead of be down a certain path, that there really is a renewable resource, energy source, that is not as incitely as a wind turbine that at times could take up to 600 feet tall. If your setback's only a quarter of a mile, I suggest a setback of 10 miles if you've got a wind turbine that's 600 feet tall. The other thing- The other thing, uh, there is not gonna be, as far as I know, any environmental impact statement, because they say, which I don't quite believe, there's not gonna be any federal monies or land involved, therefore they do not have to do a federal environmental impact statement on all of this. I do believe that the County Commission does have the ability to do, if you do an analysis that's actually very truthful, if you take into account the lifestyle, the viewpoint, economics, all aspects of this. That's all I ask for. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Charles Hughes. I go by Chuck. I'm here tonight with my wife Katie. We've been here, we're newcomers, we've been here 21 years, so relative newcomers. You've heard tonight from people that have been here much longer and much shorter. Thing we have in common is we, what we want, why, and what we want to live like in Elbert County. And as you know more than us, it is changing rapidly. But can we control any of it? And that's why you have the positions you do. I was really discouraged a lot over the last months, but tonight I'm encouraged. I read your 1041 regs, and those applied to this Colorado Pathways and the resulting wind and solar flies in the face a lot of that, the concepts in those regs. I think if you apply the critical eye to those, you just heard some people go through a few of them, there's a lot of them. I'd kinda like to take a lot of time just to tear into them myself, but that's your job. So, I think you'll have really good success, but look at it from a mic, more of a macro view. The West in the US is changing. And are we going to be vassals of the big cities and have our lifestyles degraded with, with the term slathering the West with wind generators? And it started to happen already. And what I've convinced of is, and even some representatives from XL Energy have agreed, those windmills never hit break even. They have to be going at full capacity a lot and for 50 years, and they still don't get to break even. So, that's the kind of, of thing that's gonna, you're gonna see in the West. And then there was a mention made of decommissioning. And I see a real train wreck coming in, countrywide, on decommissioning if, when we get electric cars all over the place, hazardous material-rich wind generators, solar farms, that the decommissioning process is gonna turn out to be a real burden on this country. So I would encourage you to apply a very critical eye to what I was happy to read in the 1041 regs. And let's find a way to have not the entire West. And we've all thought, well gee, we're gonna, Elbert County's not gonna dodge this completely, but surely we can find places in Elbert County that we can maintain a quality that's hospitable to wildlife, that's hospitable to domestic animals, and in a county that's changing dramatically, we can find a way to, to make it a good place to live for people that just came and that have lived here a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker would be Doug.
My name's Doug Bennett. I live at 35600 Private Road 73. Been a county resident here for, since 1974. Bought our place in 1983. And it also involves Colorado Pathways Project. Of course, when we built out there, hardly anything was ever built out there. We kinda got blindsided by this Colorado Pathways Project coming through. I've been to all their meetings. The only things I do hear is, they wanna go ahead and pursue this project. Our great governor has given them okay, PUC has given them okay. Do our regulations, our 1041s, have the power to stop them? I don't know. Can we regulate them? I don't know. A lot of the folks have said, what happens when they are all done? If they get private entities sponsor this, they go bankrupt, we're stuck with all these towers sitting up there. Also, they also impose that if the project comes through our property, if they put a trailway system through there, private landowners have to carry the insurance and upkeep on these things, which is very unfair to all Elbert County residents. So with that said, we really need to think, hopefully we have enough bite to deter this project. They do have one just outside of Lyman, there's a transmission line that goes up there. They also have the I-70 corridor. Every time I talk to the people from XL Energy, they said it's too far. They're a multi-billion dollar entity, and they can surely afford going around a little bit, a few miles to protect the environment stuff, so that's basically all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wants to speak that didn't get a chance? State your name and address.
My name is Gary Lauer. I live at 12405, County Road 134, Kiowa. In looking through the criteria that was put up here, if we could back up one, at least one page, yeah. Is there not a 12K, 12 cri, yeah, let's go to K, if we can find K on there? "Project designed to serve areas within the county and is necessary to meet county development and population demands in those areas." Let's take the XL power line. It's all been stated that that is not gonna provide anything to Elbert County. So if we start imposing the regulations up here, which I like a lot of, we're not gonna have to deal with XL, we're not gonna have to deal with wind turbines, and we're not gonna have to deal with solar panels. Because if you look at that statement, and then to go to the next one where it has the seven criteria, which the previous gentleman, one of them mentioned, will not create an undue financial burden on residents of the county, give me a break. You put a wind generator on my property, the only thing it does to the value of that is downward. You put XL tower across my property, same thing happens, solar panels, the list goes on. If you go back several years when the county commissioners approved the wind turbine project down in southern Elbert County, I asked the commissioners to confirm with that company how much it's gonna cost the taxpayers for that specific wind turbine project. His answer, he called me aside when I got done speaking, he called me aside and he said, it's $68 million a year, just for that one little section. $68 million a year. Each one of those generators, turbines utilize 460 gallons of oil per year. And with the current administration's tactic of trying to kill the oil industry, you aren't gonna have enough oil to put in them. So they're gonna be sitting on people's property, and they're not gonna be running. So if, if we can get the application of all this criteria up here imposed on the projects that are coming at us, I don't see how any of them can get approved. So it's gonna come down to what is the interpretation of 12K, what's gonna be interpretation of 7I, and the list goes on. The benefits of the county are not there. Long-term benefits are not there. They're not there for the property owner, and they're not gonna benefit the county long-term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public comment session. So, would you like to address some of the issues? I'd like to say one thing first, before we look at that. The 1041 actually gives us more control than what we've had in the past. That's a whole idea behind it. We have had, we're not, we're not doing anything where we're making it really easier for somebody. We're actually just regulating it to the point where we have some control. There's more control than we've had on anything in the past. And the whole concept behind it is, is to try and control some of these projects that are coming in, and try and do more what is right, so.
Yeah, I, I think a couple of things. I heard kind of a reoccurring theme about one particular proposal that we don't have an application for, this, and that's the XL Pathway Project. These rules and regs are designed to review an application such as that, but what we're considering tonight is not that particular application, if that makes sense. So, appreciate all the comments. Yep, they're relevant to, you know, your discussion this evening, because it addresses applications like that. But we don't have that particular application. I'm sure that probably all of you are aware of that, but just wanted to make sure. I'll go through and hit on some things. If I missed something that you have a particular interest in, by all means, let me know. There was some conversation about a quarter-mile setback. That quarter-mile setmac is in the current regulations, and that relates to location for a 1041 application, if you will, in relation to an existing subdivision. Whether it says existing and planned, I'm not sure exactly, but there has to be a specific distance based on that existing subdivision. So that's, I think, where that quarter-mile setback came from. Heard, you know, a fair amount of conversation too about what do you do with the leftovers when they're in the air and they're not working anymore, or they've fallen, no longer functioning, basically. There are some elements in these criteria that would perhaps allow for getting some financial security to help take that down, that if that hasn't been done appropriately by that business owner, if you will, then there is that, that possibility or that, that conversation about that. Excuse me. Appreciate the comment about archaeological concerns, teepee rings and that sort of thing. One of the criteria that we looked at or is in here addresses, you know, historic or archaeological finds as well. Also, a good comment about the trails, and if there were trails underneath potential wires, or if they were long pipelines or that type of thing, that, you know, that perhaps puts insurance requirements on to property owners. And I, I really haven't had any conversation with folks about trails, so not gonna be easy to address, and this, these criteria really don't address that either. Good comment nonetheless to think about, well, if people are walking across your property, where does that put that property owner? So, good to consider as well. Happy to answer any other questions that the Planning Commission might have.
Can I ask a question there? Relating to visual impact, is there a formula that we could introduce that would introduce a setback based on height or something like that? Is that, or is that wise, or what, what do you think of that?
I, I think that the way that the criteria is written is much more nebulous than a specific, because your perspective of that, whatever it might be, is gonna be different than mine, than his, than hers. So, the criteria, I think that, and there might be some others in here, but number six that's up on the screen there, that says the benefits accruing to the county from the proposed activity outweigh the losses of any resources within the county, or the losses of opportunities to develop such resources. You know, it's gonna, the view's gonna change if there is a tower there, or a wind turbine there, or something else that might be there. How much is, is that? And I, it's hard to start putting a numbering system to that, where if it scores this, then it's good to go, or if it scores that, it's not. It's, it's that same type thing when we look at the comprehensive plan, that you have to weigh out those criteria and how that fits with that area, and that criteria that says it doesn't fit with that area. And they're, they're both in there.
I have several things I'd like to have put in the record on, on items that may need to be clarified or changed. On page three-
Roger, can you move your mic closer, please?
Closer? Okay. On page three, number two, C, it talks about major domestic water and sewage facilities. And the second sentence says, has a statement that says, surface area at high water line in excess of 50 acre feet. Those are two different units of measurement. Surface area is one item that is simply a flat measurement. 50 acre feet is a volume measurement. So something would have to be modified there. On page five, item one subsection III, says the specific activity has been acted upon by the Planning Commission. I think there needs to be a period there. And then it goes on to say replacement of an existing water diversion structure, so I think it's two sentences, but it doesn't, it's not real clear to me. On number four, upgrades to existing water and sewer treatment facilities that are required, that are required maintenance, that sentence doesn't make any sense. There needs to be something inserted between required and maintenance. I think it should read that require maintenance, but that should be reviewed. On page nine, 1041 pre-application submittal, number two, B, relationship of the proposed activity surrounding topographic. I believe I would like to see added geographic, so to read topographic, geographic, and cultural features such as roads, streams, and I'd like to have vegetation added. So read features such as roads, streams, vegetation, and existing structures which could affect if, if something went through an area or was proposed an area that had a lot of vegetation, it would be damaging to the existing vegetation. That would, we'd like to control that. Under, on page 10, at the bottom of the page, 1041 application levels, that is the first place that I found that it refers to that Fonzi, F-O-N-S-I. And it should be defined at that point, since it's the first one where it came up. It actually gets defined in the next page, but that definition should be moved up, 'cause that was confusing initially on what that Fonzi actually meant. Page 11, item two, in the middle of the page, it has a highlighted area that says, "To be determined." Are we going to leave that blank and fill it out later? On page 12, change in 1041 permit type, number one at the bottom of the page, at any time prior to the notice of public before the BOC. Something's missing in that sentence. And I can provide these to you at the end with my comments on them. Number, page number 16, item three, or item two, under recreational opportunities, I would like to see added that they would need to- would like to see added that they would need to, the applicant would need to provide, possibly provide landscape plan and screening plan, if that is appropriate. The director can determine that. On page 24, top of the page, number five, it starts out saying schedule permitting. The applicant shall address in writing all issues and deficiencies. I question the wording there. It seems to me like if they're referral agency comments, the applicant should address them before it comes before the planning commission or board of county commissioners, not just if they happen to feel like it. Number five, later on that same page, 24, notice of linear facilities, when the hearing is for linear facilities, including but not limited transmission line, pipeline, et cetera. A, says mail to all owners of property that would be traversed by the route of the facility. I think we should add or within proximate distance of the...
Quarter-mile?
Whatever. Some, some distance, and that has been talked about here, too. So, I can provide all those comments. Now, as a general comment, I was involved earlier in, when the draft was discussed with the people from the state, and I was being new on the commission, I was pleased with the fact that, that this was being proposed as an addition to our zoning and subdivision regulations for major projects. I think we've got pretty good control over minor subdivisions, special use review, et cetera, but some of the major projects have not had that same level of control. So, I'm pleased to see that this is being acted upon, and I think it gives us a lot of control over and above what we'd have normally in the subdivision zoning regulations. Some of the things that we've talked about hazardous materials, both during construction and after decommissioning, are addressed on page 18. Visual impacts are discussed on page 16. And going back through, most of the comments that were made tonight have actually been addressed in this and give us the ability to control that. So, I'm pleased with the, with the process, and I'm pleased with the document.
Can you hear me? How about now? Perfect. So, back on page five, on the tables, the wind energy system commercial is kind of soft and fluffy. Can we get a better breakdown of minor versus major? Say four to seven is, is a minor, anything above that is major. We make an assumption in table two, which basically says we're not taking any level of action below 100 dwelling units in the case for minor or, for the domestic water treatment or the sewer treatment. Skipping on to page six, specific exemption, section three, I hate seeing to be determined in there. I was hoping that maybe I could get an answer on what that means. There's another to be determined on the Fonzie section, section two on page 12. You might have that one, too? I'm going down to the financial section if I can find where I highlighted here. The actual language in the financial section, whether they're determining whether someone has to be able to provide some kind of financial impact or financial statement that says they're going to be able to cover the costs associated with either decommissioning a facility or a group is not covered well. The language there is also pretty soft and fluffy. I think it leaves it to the board of county commissioners' discretion as to whether they need to provide that or not. I'd actually like to see them put some more specific language in there about making sure that there is some kind of criteria that makes the judgment call for who needs to pony up money and where.
What page, what page was that, 31?
Yeah, I think it's 31. Hang on, I'm getting there. I'll find it. It's actually in...
I'm looking at N.
31, and, yeah, 31N. Okay. That's all I got.
Looking over most of this, my main concern was some limitations on setbacks. I don't think that what we've got in there is sufficient for, I don't, I don't think what we've got in there is sufficient for handling most of these different types of facilities and how, how far they can be from, I don't, I don't know if a quarter-mile is from a subdivision or something like that is really an accurate way of looking at it, but I think that we need to define setbacks a little bit better throughout the document for all of the different types of facilities we're talking about. It's just not, it's just not a, a good way of doing it, the way it's set up at the moment. Any other comments?
Yeah, I got, I have a comment. I think it's for Greg. These projects typically have three phases, the submittal process, the planning, the forecasting, then you have the build-out of the project, then you have the follow-up and the compliance, the financial guarantees, specific performance issues. Who on the county staff follows up, puts boots on the ground at different intervals, six months out, one year out? How is that monitored for that specific performance criteria?
That's really not in there.
So, our code enforcement officer would be the person that'd be charged with that. We have in our code a requirement that for special uses by review, that they go out on a yearly basis to take a look at them. So, to me, that would make a lot of sense to have kind of that yearly review for 1041 applications as well.
Okay.
I don't think that that's in there right now, but I think that that would be pretty logical.
I'd like to tag on to that with respects to the, when we talked about economic impact, sometimes, at least what I, I read, the applicants are required to provide some of this information or all of this information. How are we verifying, what is our source of accuracy? Is it a developer telling us, here's what the numbers are, and, or do we have a, a system for validating that those numbers are in fact what we, as a county, believe those numbers are?
I think it depends on what those numbers are in particular. For engineering studies, we have, you know, a county engineer that reviews a drainage study that the applicant's engineer would put together, so there's that review of the work that's already done by, you know, that engineering expert. I think it depends on what it is. We generally, with these type of applications, would have the applicant sign an agreement that basically says if we need expertise for the review of this particular case, then they're responsible to pay for that. If I don't have, you know, that much knowledge about bald eagles, and there's a bald eagle nest right over there, we might need to hire somebody to give us some more knowledge and information about that. So, from that to whatever the heck it might be, we have the ability on staff to do certain things, and if we need to go beyond that, then we have the ability to do that as well.
Yep. Thank you.
I would like to add, for the citizens that haven't seen the document, this, Greg put together a great summary, but this is just some of the highlights. It really dials it down, it really, it's detailed. I think it's a good document, and I think it was a good job putting it together, and it's very specific. Does talk about some of the things like decommissioning, it does go into some of the details. We have some things we're working on with it and we're taking care of tonight, but I think there's, a lot of them haven't read it, so they don't, they're seeing the presentation, so they don't see how in-depth it is and how detailed it is.
Okay. This is scheduled for the BOCC win?
On July 13th, the next Wednesday.
Okay. So, you have another opportunity to talk to the BOCC about these same issues, and they'll be going over some of the things that we've covered tonight, and they'll be doing some modifications. So, you might see a slightly different version when the BOCC gets through with it than what we got here. One of the concepts behind this is to be able, you know, you're talking about the route of the power line. One of the concepts behind this is being able to tell them where they can and can't go when, during, we're going through that approval process. So, that's, that's kind of something you can look forward to in, in the concept behind the 1041 regulations that we've got right now. It gives us a lot more control.
Questioning for Greg. On comments that we've made tonight and that might lead to some modifications, how can we get, as a commission, how do we get information on what is going to go to the BOCC?
Since there's a relatively short turnaround, you won't have another formal meeting, what my expectation would be, those comments that you've made, depending on what your motion is, but depending on what comments have been made that perhaps could accept it into a motion, would be incorporated into the document, and we would then forward that along to the board, so that they would have the comments and suggestions that were made. There were a couple of to-be-determined. We need to determine what that is so that they're reviewing that.
And that'll be, can, can that be done by next week?
Yes.
And, and we could review that somehow ahead of time?
I think what I would tend to do is, I've heard hopefully what you've said, Teresa's been doing a good job of trying to track this down as well, that if we had some specific nuances that we needed to clarify, you know, did you say this, or did you say that? I might reach out to the individual that perhaps put forth that idea. I don't anticipate getting the planning commission back together to review those nuances, but I would certainly want to accurately represent what it is you're trying to say to the board and how you'd like these regulations to be stated.
Okay. My next question would be, since it is a quick turnaround, is that, is that meeting subject to the notification process? Is that why it's set for next week?
It, it has already been noticed for that, yes.
Okay. So, on our part, I assume that we could not have a condition that we want to, what do you, table it or to a date specific so we can re-review it? Or does that mess up the notification process?
You potentially could. That wouldn't be my recommendation. From what I've heard, it doesn't feel like it's way far off. It feels like there's some, you know, loose ends, dotting some i's, crossing some t's are important, but I, I don't get the sense that it's that far off. I'd rather, you know, take forward that which we have with the modifications that you've described and get that into the board's hands, if that's what the board sees fit to do, or the planning commission, excuse me, feels, is appropriate.
Are you going to give a list of what we've suggested to the BOCC, or are you just going to modify some stuff and give it that to them?
It would be my preference to hand them a document that incorporated your, your changes. I, again, I don't feel like that's a daunting task. I think that we can make those changes and, and have that to them. And again, if that's something that, you know, the board or the planning commission sees fit to do, would perhaps call, you know, Roger, Kevin, Mike, Dwayne, whoever has made a comment here, and incorporate that if there is some confusion on our part as to what was said. If you wanted to handle that another way, we could, we could look at that, but my preference would be to take forward a recommendation this evening that would perhaps incorporate those changes that were mentioned.
So, looking at the stuff that's associated with the financial section, that's actually pretty, going to need some pretty comprehensive changes because none of it is prescriptive, it is very soft and fluffy language, and you could probably do a rewrite in a short amount of time, but I would expect that the planning commission would actually like to re-review those after that statement or after those changes are made.
So, as soon as you get that set up for them, can you give us a, a redline copy?
I would be happy to. The only hesitation I have is, you know, a relatively short time period here, so perhaps what I'll do is, is we'll make those changes, get them to you, and recognize that, you know, if you can, take a look through those or offer your thoughts and comments, make sure we've captured what you were trying to say. Appreciate the comment by Commissioner Kirkwood. I think maybe that would be an appropriate thing to mention to the board. You feel like the financial section is not something that is as well thought out as perhaps other areas and needs some, some fine tuning. It may be more generic than more specific at this point, that you're concerned about that section. I think that that's, I'm trying to capture what you've said, but if that's, you know, how the planning commission feels like that, I think we could forward that along to them and say, let's beef this up, and perhaps then at that point in time, they can make choices and decisions based on your comments that, you know, dotted some of those i's, crossed some of those t's, but needs a little finer look at the financial portion of it.
Hey, Greg, what is the board's preference, the BOCC? What is their preference on how they want to see these recommendations and the changes? What's their preference? Do they want to see them, you know, rewritten before, before they're received, or do they want some ambiguity in there? Saying, well, somebody said this, and maybe we should change that. I mean, do they want that more of a finalized document, or do they just want some changes and recommendations? What's their preference?
If we're making a recommendation to approve, they're going to want something more finite and done.
Yeah, I, I think that it's not a bad idea to have kind of a redline version there so they could see those changes that were made. You know, instead of to be determined, we added this in, makes perfect sense. You know, and, and I think that that financial, you know, element there might have a little bit more detail that's needed and a little bit more time spent on that than we have in a couple of days. But that's, I think, the one piece, perhaps, that's a little different animal than the others that we're discussing.
I think the redline, I think the redline version, if we could all review that, I think would, would satisfy us, satisfy me, anyway.
What I would want to do, too, is make sure that there's no concern from the county attorney's standpoint regarding that. I don't have any problem with it. This is a legislative action, it's not a quasi-judicial one, so you have the ability to do some different things with that. But I'd want to make sure that if you make a certain recommendation, that he doesn't have any concern with that, too. So, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, my opinion is this is a very significant document that we're looking at, and I would like to see in writing, included in the document, some of the things we've talked about tonight, so we can review and analyze that. That being the case, my motion is going, concerning the 1041 regulations update and revisions, I'm going to move that we continue that to our meeting of July 19th so we can have a finalized, revised and finalized draft for subsequent submittal to the board of county commissioners.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against?
Nay.
Is that... Is that four to one? I'm sorry. Dwayne, were you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll make some adjustments and bring that to your July 19th meeting.
Thank you.
So what that would be something that I would expect is that it would not then be heard by the board, but I'm not 110% sure about that. So I would say look at the agenda here at the end of the week for that. But that's, that's my expectation is that it would not be. Haven't necessarily had that come up, so please take a look at the agenda as that comes out late Thursday. Be happy to give anybody my card too if you want to give me a call or shoot me an email.
Next item.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a break for five minutes?
Yes. Actually, we'll take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
Well, the community. They ship it to many towns.
Spring Valley.
Well, Spring Valley's not quite that big.
Pretty close.
You know, what were they? I don't know how many houses they had planned.
He charged receipts. And then he went and did the same thing again next time. We said.
They're building a whole new section over here by the new county road there on something called the West Coast.
There's a whole section there.
You too.
That's part of their original plan. That's why they were retarded in that road.
That's what they did.
Now you can really see why. Like, you know, I drove in yesterday and there's a, another sign, another yellow sign on the east side or the west side of that road.
I thought that was for the.
I don't think so. That, that sign should have been, no, that sign is further down after it turns the corner to go west.
Yeah, you're right.
That sign, I think it's taken out. It's reported, we heard that. This was on the, on the 13th extension.
Impressive.
13.
So what do you think?
West side of the road, about halfway down the road, there's one of our signs. I didn't take that and stop and read it, so it's probably for a community meeting.
I'll check it out. I mean, I live in.
Last spring, before the road was built, my wife and I went ahead and drove on it anyway. And down at the end where it turned, there was a yellow sign. Notice a community meeting. Down.
Yeah.
Down the road.
But do we even have the staff to be down?
I mean, this time, yeah.
Well, who do?
Didn't stop.
He's a builder.
Making plans, huh?
All right. Wait for it.
I agree. So put that in there.
Came compared to that.
I'm glad we continued that one.
Did you, did you go out and drive past this one?
Yeah, I actually did.
Interesting area there.
Sorry, brother.
I don't know, I'm taking up too much space, man.
I've got plenty of room. I, I spread it out too much.
Yeah, good thing nobody's sitting here. We'd be in trouble if we got all spread out.
I think that one, that one line on page 12 was correct. It just was flowing from the title and number one where you had, it seemed to disconnect.
Well, then they'll read through it and they'll go. All right, we will resume our meeting and the next item on the agenda is the Craven Rezone Case, RZ-21-0049. Would you like to do the first?
Sure, Mr. Chair. This is Matthew Carney with CDS giving the presentation for the Craven Rezone, RZ-21-0049. This is again a rezoning request considering from Agriculture 8 to Agriculture Residential AR at a location of 24625 County Road 21, just outside of Albert. Just to give you a general orientation of where the project is located, just directly west of the town of Albert along County Road 21. The landowner is Randall Craven of Legend Companies LLC. There's a concurrent minor plat request under consideration that will be decided by the CDS director upon board approval. The pre-application meeting was initially held by CDS staff and the applicant on June 3rd of last year. Community meeting was conducted over Zoom during the emergency order on July 2nd of 2021 and a formal application was filed about this time last year. We're here for the planning commission hearing on July 5th. This will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners at their land use hearing on July 27th and a minor plat administrative decision will be filed on July 28th, the following day. I can attest that the noticing has been completed in accordance with the zoning and subdivision regulations. For the zoning context, generally speaking, this is a predominantly agricultural zoned area of the county. However, as you can see in multiple instances along this corridor, primarily of 21 and also 1521 where we have some additional iterations, whether that be the JNS subdivision, the X-bar, V subdivision, Gunsmoke, Cantrell Ranch, and Eckhart, that's a little bit more proximate, as other examples of AR subdivisions on 40-acre parcels in this general area. Just noting that we are very close and proximate to the town of Albert, which is one of the higher density areas within the county. In looking at the aerial map, again, as this is a predominantly agriculture zoned area, there is not a lot of development primarily in this particular stretch of the corridor. The lot in question is undeveloped as well and to my knowledge has been used for agricultural purposes and has not been developed to this point. In looking at some of the site specifics, we, as in current CDS staff, reviewed a request from the applicant about February. An initial subdivision, subdivision design was provided, even though that is pertinent to the minor plat request decided by the CDS director, it is pertinent for a discussion in the sense of the rezone. As it was initially applied for, there was some variation that was requested from the 10-acre AR minimum. As the proposal was, it was four relatively even sized, approximately 9.2 acre lots, noting that this is a property of about 39 and a half. Upon discussing with the applicant, the applicant agreed to revise this design so that we would be able to maintain more of a conformity based on the augmentation plan that was approved. Based on the timing of the factor, the CDS director is comfortable with considering administrative variance for this particular lot size, noting that the augmentation plan was approved before CDS gave additional guidance on the lot dimensions that were decided by the applicant and proposed to CDS. And in general, the access to this subdivision will be off of a private road and cul-de-sac from County Road 21. This is mirroring almost the exact layout of the Eckhart subdivision that was approved approximately 17 years ago, a little bit farther north on County Road 21, more approximate to 102. I've been looking at some of the referral responses that we collected. The biggest delay that was incurred here was due to the Division of Water Resources requesting an augmentation plan for this property. The water supply and usage didn't change throughout the process, that 2.6 acre feet for all 40 acres was under consideration, with generally 0.65 acre feet per year for 300 years being approved with that augmentation plan for each of those lots. In general, the most recent letter that we have received from DWR, the Division of Water Resources, indicated that this water supply is adequate and can be supplied without injury. Other referrals that I'll touch on here that essentially weren't objecting to this proposal in Mountain View Electric, they requested certain boundary easements to be added to the plat application. And the school district requested a per lot impact fee. That's something that we'll look to condition with that subdivision approval. In general, I'll touch on the fact that these comments that were raised during the referral period have been addressed in full at the time of this hearing. So in looking at the review criteria that we have for rezoning requests, we have six criteria that staff considers and provides feedback on for you to consider. The sixth criteria being as follows. Does the proposed rezoning bear some relationship to the comprehensive plan? Does it support it? We are finding with a lot of these rezoning and minor plat type concurrent applications that we're seeing that there aren't a lot of goals and policies that are directly supportive of these type of applications. However, the broader vision of the comprehensive plan is to support property rights, but also to encourage residential growth as well. Given some of the specifics that we have in this general area, we'd like to make the assertion that this is a relatively safe way to increase density and achieve that residential growth that the comprehensive plan is looking for. In looking at some of the surrounding land uses that we have in the area, I touched on a number of other smaller AR, approximately 35 to 40 acre AR subdivisions that are located within a mile or two of the subject property, especially the Eckhart subdivision that's relatively within a quarter mile of where this property is located, that bears a very similar subdivision design as this one. I do feel with approvals like that and generally the push to AR zoning in some of these smaller properties that this is compatible with some of the surrounding land uses that we are seeing in the area. In looking at a provision of public services, looking at some of the referral comments that were collected, received and synthesized, we believe that there will be a very limited impact to public services as these future lots that will be created with the minor plat request will each have their individual well and septic and will have direct access to County Road 21 through a private road. In looking at an impact to the environment, we believe that the purposes of having four AR zone lots upon approval of both of these applications will not have an adverse impact on the environment, that generally speaking, agriculture use and single-family housing is not believed to have a significant impact on the environment based on other reviews completed on applications of this scale. And in looking at traffic congestion, very early in the process, one of the engineers that we have contracted to us made comments that a traffic letter would not be necessary, that 38 trips were predicted to be generated with the subdivision and that the road network that was there would be able to support this without any additional improvements. And to finish, in looking at the health, safety and welfare of county residents, previous or in the future, staff is not finding any detrimental impact to those items through a complete referral review and looking into of all the complete situs factors that might influence this type of application and with the approval of the augmentation plan and the subsequent opinion provided by the Division of Water Resources were further, further solidified in that opinion. With that in mind, I'll make the file, I'll ask that you make the following findings, that generally that this proposal is in general conformance with the county's comprehensive plan, that this proposal meets the criteria for approval in the Albert County zoning regulations, that the proposal is compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area, and that the proposal will not result in a significant impact to the health, safety or welfare of the residents and landowners of the surrounding area. So with that, CDS recommends that the planning commission make a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners on the Craven Rezone, RZ-21-0049, subject to the following conditions. Conditions being, the applicant will be required to move the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision of the Board of County Commissioners, that this rezoning shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the rezone exhibit is recorded, and generally that this recordation of documentation occurs within 180 days of the Board of County Commissioners' approval. And that'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Ben. Would the applicant like to make a statement about the, the presentation, if any?
Yeah, my name is Randall Craven, 10455 Reindeer Circle in Franktown. Appreciate the, hearing the presentation tonight. Appreciate the work that Greg and Matt and his team have done. I've been a resident of Douglas County for 54 years. Had the privilege of growing up on small acreage and livestock, horses, et cetera. And I've found that as our counties have grown, both Douglas and Albert, that it's really difficult for young families to be able to buy a piece of agriculture ground and to live that dream and to, you know, raise kids and, and live the life lessons that I learned growing up with livestock in a rural environment. So I'd appreciate your consideration and approval of the project.
Thank you. Do we have any public testimony? Anybody that would like to speak about this? Okay. Hearing none. All closed public testimony. And word only discussion.
Yeah, I would like to make a comment.
The, did Roden, I think Roden Bridge made a comment about the cul-de-sac being greater than 600 feet, but I didn't see any resolution of that. Did they have a problem with that?
I, I reached out to Public Works for any additional comment on the application and didn't hear that standard called into concern at that time. It wasn't during the pre-application phase. It wasn't in that consideration pretty early on, but that issue wasn't raised again by the folks from Public Works or Roden Bridge.
It's minor, but I just wondered if it was resolved.
Yeah. Generally speaking with those, they'll defer to the fire department on that. And I had reached out to Mr. Homer with the Albert Fire Department and he said as long as it meets their general driveway specifications for the road as well as the cul-de-sac, that they're in support of the application.
It does show on the exhibit that it's a 50-foot radius on the cul-de-sac, so it gives us the turnaround that the fire department typically wants.
Yep.
Yeah, I would just like the board to note that I was at the Atkinson Planning Commission meeting when that was approved. It was adamantly opposed by the surrounding landowners as not complying with the surrounding landowners. I think it's B on your slide, presentation for review criteria. So I don't know how that one was approved at the time, but, but it was. So now we use that as, oh, we have one there. Now, well, let's approve this next one. So I would just like to point that out, that that one, at that time, was adamantly opposed by the surrounding landowners.
Yeah. And the comment I'll make on that is that there was a master plan that was evaluated for certain proposals like that, for certain density requirements, as we now have the comprehensive plan that doesn't have those types of requirements in place as that master plan from some time ago. Generally speaking, the criteria that we're working on is not as specific as might have existed previously during the approval of Atkinson. I definitely noticed that in looking at some of the other subdivisions that have been approved in the county, maybe 10 to 15 or 20 years ago, where those standards were more strictly reviewed and upheld. Generally speaking, with the comprehensive plan being in its position, we, we do not have the tie to that master plan that we once used to.
It also speaks to the main corridors and the development close to the corridors. And so this, this meets that condition as well.
Yeah. It's not directly located on a collector identified by the transportation plan. It's just where.
Not exactly, but it is a main road down there, so.
We know that that.
You've got that sort of a.
It's in between two corridors, correct.
Yeah, it's a heavily late traveled road. It's all.
Dwayne? Any comments?
No, sir. Sorry. No comments.
Hey, entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ-21-0049.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
Yes.
Nay.
Yes.
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 That should conclude everything for tonight.
We don't have any work session items for you. Do have a couple of announcements. We have two new planners that have just joined our team today, so would like to introduce them to you here real quick. Steven, you want to come up and please say howdy?
Hey, welcome aboard.
Hi, I'm Steven Hayes. I'm the new senior planner.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, you've seen me a couple of times before, but I'm official.
So, what's your background? Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Been a planner for a couple of decades. I've worked in the state of Nevada and the state of Wisconsin. Now, I live here in Colorado. Lot of experience in working with planning commissions and applicants and processing permits.
Again?
I'm a certified planner. I have a master's degree in planning. I'm AICP. I'm also a certified public manager, so I've got some education as well as experience. Just happy to be here.
Great, thank you. We really appreciate you being here. And Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Granja. I'm the new planner one here with you guys.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Welcome, thank you.
Did you, where's your background? You just...
I have a background in architecture, and my master's in planning. And then this is my first job as a planner, planning practice. And I started a PhD in planning a year ago at CU Denver. That's one of the things that brought me to this job as well.
I hope you'll be gentle with us.
Oh, sure. Nice to meet you all.
We're very excited to have both of them, for sure.
Gosh.
So am I.
I'd say welcome to both of you, and thanks for bringing this huge crowd tonight. That's the biggest crowd since I've been here, so keep it up.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.